Good evening, 7 o'clock. Let's come to order for the District 208 Board of Education meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, can you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Durkin, Ms. Gasko.
Here.
Ms. Roscoe.
Here.
Slav.
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Here. Do we have any visitor statements this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion information items and FOIA requests.
One FOIA request. We had a request for one of our videos related to an accident that occurred on First Avenue. So they submitted a FOIA request. We ran it through our attorneys and responded accordingly. And it was not related to the one with the sign. It was something from a different day.
Noted. Any other questions? We can move on to any discussion items. Mr. Van Horst, do you want to raise the issue?
Just curious if we need to have a discussion on the process for replacing our wonderful seniors that will be moving on next year. And just checking to see if we need to discuss any things on committee or applications or anything like that.
I do think we need to identify members of the Board of Education to interview the next applicants, but Dr. Freitas, can you give us an update?
Sure. So the deadline is this Thursday, April 13th. We're still accepting applications. And in the past, depending on the number of candidate, we've extended the deadline a week or two. After all the applications have been collected, we sit down and we interview the students, myself, superintendent, and a board member of the board's choice. And once the interviews happen, we recommend, or we've recommended to students to be student board members. So start accepting applications. We have the interview process next, and then once all that's taken care of, we'll land, hopefully, on to finalist.
So at this point, does the Board of Education need to identify its, I think this is also your question, right? Identify the interview candidates or we have another meeting for that to occur? I'm just, I'm fuzzy on the timeframe. When do the, the new members don't start till the fall, correct?
The new members don't start, technically their first meeting is the first meeting of August. They don't attend June or July. Last year, Mr. Van Horst and Ms. Gasko were the interviewees. If they can do it, or if the board wants to select somebody else. It's good to have two. If we don't have two, we can only get one because of work schedules. That's also okay as well. We could do it via Zoom, or they can come to school now. We, I think, did we do it in person last year?
We did do it in person.
Yeah, so if we could, you know, if they could spare a half a day and we can, there's a short 20-minute interview probably with each candidate, depending on the number of candidates that apply.
And that's in late April?
We would want to do that in probably the first week or two of May, so that we can approve the board, the new students. The final deadline should be approving the student association, the student advisor to the board by the May COW. So that would be the 23rd of May. So you have the April 28th meeting. I would say that's probably, just to give Hector if he needs another week or two to extend the deadline. And so the goal would be to try to do the interviews within the first week or two of May.
So I guess I would open the discussion. We can have this discussion now. If Mr. Van Horst and Ms. Gasko are still interested, does anyone else want to be part of that interview discussion? I think you guys did a good job.
I am happy to do it, but also happy to pass it if someone's interested. So I'm, I'll put my name out there to do it if needed, and otherwise, happy to let others get involved.
Okay.
Happy to do it as well. Because I have a new job this time around, it really truly will depend on dates. I've got a couple of things happening in May, and I don't want to hold up the process. But I, I really did enjoy the, being on the interview panel, so.
I can probably be a backup.
Okay.
That would be helpful, I think.
That'd be great. So Carolins are alternate. Well, once we get the number of candidates, I should know by this, it closes Thursday, so I'll know by the Friday update. I could update the board. Marian, if you can make sure that we put that header in so I could update the board. Once I get the information on whether or not we need to extend it for May. I believe we're at two or three candidates right now. Four candidates, okay.
Great. And then when we get to, we would ask the departing members to do the kind of the exit survey they did, but we had something similar done last year, and it was helpful information. We could dust off that document and have you guys fill that out. It'd be very helpful.
Okay. And Paulina, Asia, do you remember, did you come to the May COW? I know we saw you in at the May COW meeting. Were the other student board advisors there at that meeting? I believe that's kind of when we do our farewell to them, when we say a couple kind words and wish them luck, and that's their last meeting.
I think, I remember it being warm out. I think it may have been like later in May, because I remember sitting here with my mom and then watching Claire.
That and that would be the last one.
But you watched the last meeting, the other two, the two board members ahead of you were still there.
Yeah.
I think only Claire was here that day. I don't remember.
Yes.
She had a bad mint match. I think you are correct.
All right. Okay, so we'll plan on your last meeting being May 23rd. Okay? So you have tonight and three more.
When is graduation?
May 26th.
Okay. Do we, is May 23rd a COW?
Yes. May 9th is the meeting where we sit the new board members. So then it would be the 16th would be the week off, and the 23rd would be the new, would be the COW, May COW.
Yeah, I just don't remember our student advisors going all the way to the bitter end right before graduation, so.
They did.
Did they? Okay. All right.
I think it was just recollection of being warm out. Because it was such a cold spring last year. I didn't remember. It didn't warm up really until May. Okay. We'll be very brief that evening, so we can all promise that. We'll try to be very brief that evening. Okay, that was helpful. Thank you, Ryan. Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have any additional comments on consent?
I'm ready to vote on that, but I do, on the student handbook, there are some things that I, you know, like to throw out there to think about. I don't think they can be resolved now.
So let's move student handbook out of the consent calendar then. Does anyone make a motion to do that, remove it from consent?
Okay, so I move that we pull the student handbook out of the consent agenda.
That's, that's fine. We don't need a vote. That's on a member's discretion, so we can go ahead and do that. And then we'll go ahead and do consent on the minutes. That way we can kind of keep moving, and then we'll do, then we'll take out the handbook. Okay?
Are you in a hurry? Okay.
No, I just think we could take care of the consent matters that we had agreed to, so could you do the consent minus?
Minus the student handbook.
Minus the student handbook.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items, approves minutes from the meetings held on March 14th, 2023, open and closed, as presented in the April 11, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. We have a second from Ms. Locke, and then we do need to, actually, all in favor. I apologize. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that is approved, and then we can move on to any discussion about the student handbook matter.
Okay, so, you know, I went through the changes. Changes are fine. I saw that there's the Q codes up front, and again, yeah, I know we're heavy technology, but that those don't always work, and sometimes you got to insert the flash, you know, and I pulled it up on the tablet, didn't work on the tablet, so then I have to use the phone. But I understand you could also pull it up on the web, so then I had to go pull it up on the web. You know, do we, does it come out printed also?
Yes.
And that information that's in the Q code is, you know, is that also part of the printed version?
It's part of the, it's online and is included in the handbook.
It's just a quick reference, right?
Yes.
The QR codes, yeah.
Correct.
And what about another language? So I know we're, we're having it in English, but is it available in Spanish?
Right now, it's in English.
Yes.
There's a way to translate the online version.
We can, yes.
That's what I mean, if we could have something available online in.
Our whole website is available in multiple languages. There's a button on the top that you could trick, and it translates it to any language.
So that would translate a PDF book? Have we, have you reviewed that, make sure the translation? Because that's a long book.
Those that need it generally know that it exists on pages, but not always. Certainly, to ask the question is valid, but usually you need to translate the language.
We can communicate.
I mean, not translated sentences.
We can go to Georgian, Pashto. You just pick your language here.
Okay, so I, well, and like I said, it can't be done this year, but I think that would be something that I would want somebody who's a native Spanish reader to say, yes, the PDF handbook translated well, because that's like an 80-page book, and that doesn't always happen.
So we do use Google Translate.
Yes, it doesn't always translate, because I use that when I visit my relatives in Mexico.
Laura, we'll include in the.
And I'm not saying that that has to be done now, but next year, I think, something to look at, that we do a drive run, and somebody reads the whole Spanish PDF to make sure.
I'm saying we're going to include a notification that other languages are available, so parents know how to access it online.
Okay.
At least some notification for this round. Okay, Dr. Freitas?
Yes.
You okay with that expectation?
Of course, boss.
I, yeah, the title's fine, but all 88 pages, I'm not convinced that, and I would have to look at it and fill.
What do you mean, the title?
Well, he showed me what screen. Yeah. You know, short phrases translate well, but I, I don't know if you.
Well, I mean, we brought this at the last meeting, and so.
I'm not saying we do it now, but you know, as I'm looking at this, and I was looking at it online, but I think in the future, we do need to have something viable for Spanish-speaking families, and I would want to verify that the PDF has been translated in its entirety well.
Okay.
Because another thing that, when I was looking at it, I see the early graduation, which we spent time talking about, you know, it's in there briefly. The dual credit and our internships are those in the curriculum book, because they're not in our policy, our student handbook.
Okay, so we don't put curriculum in the student handbook. We just would put like the process, and we're still finalizing some of the process on how we're going to provide transportation for dual enrollment or dual credit, which I think was a Lorena question at the last meeting, so that wouldn't impact this document.
So remind us when the curriculum guide comes out, then.
The curriculum guide, the board already approved like in the fall, because we had to work on it before. So yes, the board approved that there were classes for dual enrollment, and now we're getting more approved. We just got seven more classes considered for approval. So that will all be updated online.
Okay, so I think maybe.
We do not give a hard copy of that to any family. It's all available online. So it's easy to update once that's finalized.
Okay, and so since we do put in our student handbook, the gradu, and this is something for next year, as I'm looking at it, and I, you know, I'm at other high schools, you know, we do post the graduation requirements in this book, and we do say that you could graduate early. I think a sentence or two to direct somebody to the curriculum guide, you know, like a link or a direction, like an arrow, next year, when we do the student handbook, I felt like that was missing, you know, for more information on classes, because I think somebody could see that, see the graduation credits, and not realize that there's a lot more information in the curriculum guide.
Okay.
Our dress code, being in a high school for the last two years, I think next year, I felt like the dress code wasn't descriptive enough for me. At what, you know, at what point, like what's not acceptable, you know? There was things that had writing on that was not, but what outfits are not. And being in a high school for the last year, I've seen many outfits that really shouldn't be out in public. So I'm just thinking, how do we handle that as a community, as a school? Again, that's something we can do now, but as we're looking at our book.
We've actually taken steps in the last year or two to loosen our language in our dress code due to some of the advisement from our diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator.
I'm just looking for.
And from our students.
And I just want to, there, we did have a board member on the handbook committee, correct? That wasn't you, though. That was.
It was Mr. Welch.
It was Mr. Welch, okay.
Right.
So I, again, I'm thinking ahead to next year. I hear you have a list of ideas, but we should be thinking about how we engage early enough in the process.
Yes.
And have meaningful discussion about it.
Yes, and so I'm saying, because, you know, now that it's summer, I see students in other high schools, and they're coming almost in beach wear. And it's quite distracting, you know, like how much clothing is necessary to come to school. You know, it's almost that.
As long as you are safe, it's considered acceptable.
Well, okay, there might be some of us that might agree to disagree on that.
So do the students you're describing violate the clothing dress book, dress handbook in your schools that you're describing?
It's kind of like ours, and there's several, there's.
No, I mean, the school you're teaching in, you're describing kids you say are unacceptable.
Yes.
According to that school's handbook, are they violating?
Yes, and it's not being enforced, and so I'm kind of curious, yeah.
So have you, have you pushed forward that it's not being enforced to that school?
Yeah. With other teachers also, yeah.
But you have nothing, you have, not in this school, to know or say?
Well, that's why I would like to have a meaningful discussion next year, because we're not going to change anything today. You know, I'm comfortable voting on this handbook, but next year, I'd like to have a conversation on how we're handling that.
So I hear you. I think we should make sure that you are inserted at points in the process that make it meaningful, right? Whether it's when the administrative team is here and presenting the handbook, that that would have been a, been a good intersection of some of these. I think they could probably give a lot of the internal history as to why things are the way they are, but certainly be open to changes.
And when it's not followed, yeah.
Yeah, and what's, they would have the feedback on what's being followed or not followed, or what could use in tightening or loosening.
Yes.
It's a living document. It's an annually updated document.
It's an annually updated document, going back. And then the last thing, I saw a lot on the cell phone, and, which is great, because the cell phone misuse is egregious, especially in the high schools. Students are watching whole movies during class. But when I read ours, it looks pretty thorough, like they're not supposed to be out, they're not on the boat, and so I did like that. As we move forward, probably when you ask for future items of discussion, either sooner or when we're doing the student handbook, I'd like to know if we're actually enforcing what we say we're enforcing in the handbook.
So we had a very thorough update on the cell phone policy in.
Last year.
September?
We had a committee from.
Yeah, well, what's written is good, and so maybe we, it would be good to hear if, you know, teachers are actually able to do this.
So maybe we could ask Mr. Mannin as part of his regular culture update, safety and culture update, to incorporate something about the cell phone policy and how it's working.
Well, I think the data that's reported at the end of each semester would tell you how many infractions we're getting.
Infractions.
Different things.
You're right.
So you get that each semester.
Well, not yes and no. Students still have it out. You're in a high school, students are still listening, they're still watching TV, they're still glued to that phone.
Well, different teachers might have different levels, right? It's red, yellow, green, or whatever. So the infractions are the ones where they broke the policy, and it wasn't when the teacher allowed it. So that is working.
That's the teachers enforcing in their classroom.
It's handled in the classroom.
Yeah, I would kind of like to know, are teachers, do they feel like that this policy is supporting them? Do they feel like the cell phones are not a problem? Talking to several teachers at other high schools, they feel they're not getting the support from their board to enforce more strict cell phone rules, and they feel the cell phones are a problem. So I'd like to know if our teachers feel supported, and they're able to implement this policy, and cell phones are not a problem, because.
So my suggestion, we can break that part of our agenda with our BEA. We need to put them biannually. That would be a completely, I think, appropriate agenda item for that discussion.
That's, that's a nice place to.
Go ahead.
And if I could briefly add, you know, our cell phone policy was co-created with teachers. We support our staff, and we have held students accountable who violate our policy. But our, our structure was built together with our staff.
Yeah, what's intact sounds great. I'm just hoping that it's implemented.
I know in a lot of my classes, the first day of school, we went over all the policies, like homework, what you're supposed to do in class, like in class testing, and then the phone policy came up. A lot of my teachers either had it in red or yellow, but some of my classes had it in green. But when it's green, it's almost like if, if you're going to learn, you're going to put it away. Like the teacher's not going to like be hounding you the whole day about putting it away. It's about your own integrity. Like if you're trying to learn, you're going to put it away. Some of my teachers have like phone holders, so we get extra credit for putting our phone in there. And I mean, it's not, everyone does it, because we, we know we're getting extra credit for it, but like we don't even need it in the class. But some of the classes, our teachers are more lenient on it. Like if we're done with our work, we could take it out. But at the end of the day, it's, it's just about the student. Like if they're here to learn, they're going to put it away anyway.
Yeah, and for me, my teachers that do, that really care about the phone usage, they enforce it, but like Asia said, more, teachers are a little bit more lenient, and they just leave it up to the student to kind of be aware of when they're supposed to have it out or not.
I would imagine, especially as seniors, you're in a different space than a freshman, right?
Yeah, my son, who's a freshman, told me all about the phone holders, and he said, Mom, don't worry, I put my phone in the phone holder. So I know that he, again, self-regulation, learning how to control his actions, his behavior, knowing that having the phone out during class time has implications, allowing him to express his, you know, again, decision-making, but he reassured me that phone holders existed, so.
Okay, any additional comments?
No, I mean, I'd like to hear from teachers, because what I see, it's just, it's, it's really a hindrance. I, you know.
But again, different school.
A different school, and I would hope that's not happening here. As a parent, it would infuriate me if that was happening here, because we pay a lot of money for an excellent school, and.
So I think we have a path forward to get some feedback, and we will do that. Any other comments on the student handbook?
No.
Anyone else? And can we move forward and take a motion on that, if you could do that one with Gasko, please?
Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action to approve a student handbook, 2023, 2024 school year addition.
As presented.
As presented in the April 11, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Let's do an all in favor on this?
Yes.
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 Okay. Any opposed? We can move on. Old business, we don't have anything related to life safety.
And we had our first, we have our first construction meeting coming up, is it this week or next?
We had a preliminary meeting.
The preliminary meeting. And the zoo is this week.
And the village of Riverside tomorrow.
About the crane, okay.
Supply chain issues, are we getting equipment delivered?
For the most part, yes, because we pre-ordered through the purchasing cooperative the units. There's one part, I forget exactly which part, that is delayed until the fall, but the units will be running in fully operational, and once that part comes in, we'll be able to swap it out, and then we'll be completed at that point.
Very good.
It was good to get on top of that.
Yeah, that worked out, purchased through a cooperative.
New business, we have payment of bills. Are there any questions submitted?
There were none.
Any questions here this evening? We can go ahead.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the April 11, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. We have a second from Ms. Locke, and we have a roll call, please.
Ms. Roscoe.
Yes.
Ms. Slav.
Yes.
And Horst.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Sings.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have, as a first read, the next couple of items. Can you talk us through these?
Press policy, 111, I'm still trying to get a date that works for my policy council, so that's, we've been working on that for a couple weeks. The goal is to try to have some edits to the board by the committee of the whole meeting in April. Multi-function school and activity bus, excuse me, consolidated district plan. This is an annual requirement that the board needs to approve so that Kristin can begin to file all our paperwork for the different state grants and state fundings that we receive from ISBE. It's more of a formal, I would say it's more of a formality. Dr. Smetana, would you like to add anything?
There really have not been any substantial changes since the last time the board approved this in September, which was late last year, because the annual board requirement was new last year. So that's why we're trying to get a jumpstart on it and do it in April of this year, and then most likely, the board will see this every April.
So we could theoretically move this to consent calendar for next month, for the next meeting? Assuming there's no additional questions submitted.
If there's no substantial changes, is there, do you need something, would it help you to have it approved tonight so that you can start submitting grants? Before summer, or is that okay?
There's no rush. None of the grants are open yet, so we can, we can take a second read on this. Thank you for that.
I just have one question. Why is it called consolidated?
Because it's a consolidated application for you to fill out a lot of the same, so what, the history behind it is, a lot of the grants, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, IDEA, they were making you fill out either the same or very similar sets of questions. So the word consolidated comes from they threw them all together into this huge document that you've seen in your board packet to answer all of these questions and all these tabs.
It's like the Common App.
Yes, but then you only have to do it once.
So it's a consolidated application? It's not the district? So that's what threw me at first. I saw the consolidated district. I was like, what?
District only has to do one.
Okay.
If there were multiple schools, you wouldn't have to do one for each school. It's just one for the district. It's a very confusing name, yes.
Thank you for that.
Girls' cross-country overnight trip. Dr. Freitas, this is submitted?
Yeah, so every summer, Coach Jensen takes a girls' cross-country team to NIU, the Laredo Taft Campus out in Oregon, Illinois. Beautiful town, there's a lot of trails there, they can do hiking, team activities. This is a first read. There will be male and female chaperones as well, and the cost is very modest. It will only cost an athlete $85 for this day. This has always been approved, it's a great trip, great team-building experience for our girls' cross-country team.
So same question, is there any urgency to do it tonight, or can we wait till consent calendar at the next meeting?
I can wait.
Okay.
Okay, no fundraising needed, so they don't need to start now?
No, we're.
Okay. Consent for April COW. Kristin, I think I skipped on your minibus. I'm sorry, Ms. Eva.
Yes, minibus.[1606.24]
That was interesting.
So, yeah, our current, we have, we're currently leasing two minibuses, and they were previously a three-year lease, we extended them two more years due to COVID, because there was an extreme shortage with minibuses. There still is a shortage, we were trying for the past two years to get a third minibus and lease that, and our current company has not been able to come through with that, even though we've been on the list. And so as a result, I have been exploring other minibus companies in the state of Illinois. There are only two other ones that exist, and one is in southern Illinois, and it's quite a drive. So Central States Bus Company is the other one, and we completed a site visit to the facility last week and test drove the minibus the district would receive. It's almost identical to the ones that we have, except it's a slightly bigger engine. The plus about Central States Bus sales that we currently don't have is that they have a facility that would be able to service a bus both mechanically and, you know, if any body work needed to be done, they would be able to do that right there. And they, their supplier comes directly from Canada, and so they've been, even when they have had experienced delays during COVID, they were still getting buses, except they were maybe just a couple of months delayed. So they have assured me that they are no longer experiencing any delays and have been regularly delivering buses. So that's where we feel really comfortable with them. I've completed two reference checks already, which came back very positive. So I provided a three- and five-year lease option. I would recommend the three-year lease. I'm not looking for the board to make a decision tonight, but I would recommend a three-year lease since it's a new company that we're going with. Also, I think, you know, the five-year lease worked out with what we have now, because we had two years where we really weren't using the buses, and so I would be hesitant to jump into a five-year lease with a new company. Also, I just wanted to throw it out there to the board, I have been and continue to explore green options, so they do have an electric minibus. The only option right now is lease-to-own, and it is a rather pricey option, but I did want to at least include it for the boards, the board could decide or see that we're at least trying to explore those options. Unfortunately, none of the incentives out there apply for us, because they only apply if you're replacing a diesel bus with an electric bus, which we are not. So we wouldn't apply for any grants that may be out there.
That was my-
Is that bus able to be recharged with what we have?
It, it wouldn't be the greatest spots we would look at, at moving the parking spot, because the buses that we are looking at are three feet longer, which are nicer because they hold all of the golf clubs and equipment much nicer. So just the location alone would be a challenge, but we would, we could easily move that. From a charging standpoint, yes, they would be able to charge the bus.
I, I thank you for including that. The price tag is definitely a little, little steep, but I also wondered with the lease-to-own, is there an outlook? We don't know, it's too young to know what the real expectation is, but between mileage driven on one bus consistently daily, is there something where that monetarily could make sense in the long run? Obviously, in the short term, it doesn't, but-
The life expectancy for a minibus typically is at most like around 10 years.
Right.
So even considering that, the electric option would still be more expensive.
But then you're looking at 30 a year as opposed to 25 with no fuel.
Correct.
So I don't know what the trade-off is.
Correct.
But that's assuming that we get 10 years out of it.
Correct.
And there's no major issues.
Right.
Yes, the warranty on the battery is eight years, so that would be something to consider. The other thing to consider that I found out when I was doing this site visit is, at least from Central States Bus Sales, we would be the first district to jump into this.
So they're going to give it to a tech-
Electrifying, I don't know if that's really-
Meet me in the electric?
Yes, I don't know if that's really the best option. They have, they have sold and are doing a lot of the larger school buses that are electric, because there's a lot more incentives for those. So they have done quite a few of those, but this would be the first minibus.
Okay.
So that's definitely a pause for concern.
And they wouldn't cut us a better deal to be the first.
Yeah, we all need to be on the front.
This is the best deal.
To be the poster child.
I asked that as well.
But that's one of our initiatives, though.
You don't want to be first.
Yes, it would be, in my opinion, it would be different if it was just a lease, but it's, the only option is a lease-to-own.
Right.
So that's what gives me pause, is that we're not leasing it, we would be owning it, and so I'd be hesitant to-
If there are problems, if there are hiccups, there are-
It's stuck, and it's three times as much as the-
Correct.
I mean, that cumulative cost is amazing on a lease-to-own, I, I think. But, and there's no lease-to-own options on the standard?
Regular minibus.
There are not, to my knowledge, it's either lease or buy. And again, with the first time going with this company, I think it'd be wiser to do a three-year lease and see how things work out with the company and with the buses, and then explore those options at the end of those three years.
So your recommendation will be the three-year, not the five-year?
Yes.
And we can ask any more questions before the meeting, the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm also currently having our attorney review the lease, even though we won't sign it until next year, just so that's ready to go, because the lease language won't change.
When would the equipment be ready?
So this is currently 11 to 12 months out, and so we're looking at April of 2024, and our lease is up in June, and so I've talked-
June of '24.
Of 2024. So I've talked to them, that way even if there is an extra month or two delay, we'll still have buses, because we'll have our current buses through June of 2024. That's why I want this, the board ideally to approve it at the next meeting, so that we get our order in, and then we have three months wiggle room. And then I've also talked to Central States, and they're more than happy to delay the delivery of the buses, so they can hold them, if they do come in on time, they can hold them for a month or two if we wanted to.
So that we don't have overlap.
So that we don't have a huge overlap, and we don't have to pay for double the insurance and things of that nature, and we wouldn't have any added cost for them doing that.
And the same certification, CDL or whatever it is to drive this, is the same as the current?
Correct, yes, there's no certification after the school day, it's just during the school day if we're driving it per curricular purposes.
Okay. I still feel like if you told them we were definitely looking at it, and, because we said we wanted to do a green initiative, if, if they knew that we are serious about leasing, if they might not work with us in some way. And to be the school, it's kind of like model homes, you know, somebody's got to live in the model home so they can build more model homes. So if they want to sell more of these buses, they've got to have a school that's using one. And so, you know, if we talk to them and say we're willing to share our story with that, and then you can be able to sell more of these.
Sure, I've already tried that. I told them we were serious, I told them we had a green initiative, we already had chargers. They let me tour the electric big school buses, because that's all they had on facility. I can certainly go back to them, but these at the time were the best prices that they could do. We also-
It sounds like you did your diligence, I mean, it really does.
So 64,000 times five years is 323,000.
Right, so 32,000 a year, if you get it through the 10 years.
Correct.
Expected life.
Right, and if it fails before then, you have a whole price popcorn stand.
The battery is only good till eight, warranty till eight. That's usually the first thing that goes on the electric air is the underground, is the battery.
I think, I think it's definitely something to keep our eye on, and maybe after, you know, the next three years, when, especially when the bigger buses have been on the road that are electric, and we see how well those are faring, that would be a better time for the district to explore an electric bus. We're also still looking at doing, exploring an electric driver's ed car, and that's something that has a much lower price tag, and I think there's a lot less risk for the district, and so that might be a better jumping in place into the electric vehicle space for the district.
I'm happy that you're exploring it, I will continue to listen and be an advocate, but as Mike said, being the first person, I did not own the first flat panel TV, because they were about $20,000, but now I happily own a $400 one, so.
Five years for a bus is $95,000, five years for an electric tone is 323,000.
But we start over again in five years with a regular, as opposed to theoretically not starting over.
Three years, yeah.
Sure, but you're also getting, you're also getting a new bus and not having any issues.
New tip.
Absolutely.
Until, until the price comes into balance.
That's, that's why my TV analogy.
I think it's a good analogy.
Good job, Kristen.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
If we do have questions, though, we need to get them in before the meeting, so if we have to go to the company or-
Thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah, well.
So we'll have a copy of the actual lease in the next board packet, but we need to get questions on the substance of the lease in prior, if that makes sense.
In what meeting are we voting on this?
April 20th.
May, April, how?
Or 25th, is that, 25th?
I don't have a calendar open.
Yes, 13 plus 11, 25.
Okay. Moving on, we don't have any additional visitor statements. The discussion items we addressed earlier related to the student advisors, do we have any items for consideration at future meetings?
I would like to throw out, it's time where the school districts are all doing the standardized test, and I would just like to hear more of our standardized tests, you know, from one of our, you know, administration or faculty. I know we switched to the SAT, are we liking it? How well is it going? Are we using all the resources?
It doesn't matter. It was state mandated.
Well, I would like to know, I mean, some schools, how, how have they been dividing it? Are they coming in, are the results coming in like they anticipated? Some schools use three standardized tests, we're using the SAT, so I would just like to hear about the standardized, our standardized test process. It's a huge investment, it's a big deal, and-
That's when we give the, the fall report, when we give the scores from ninth through 11th grade on the SAT and their growth. So maybe Hector, we could include in that the process we're using to, you know, issue the standardized test. We also issued, we also issued the state mandated science exam.
Okay. SAT is tomorrow?
Correct.
And the school did two practices for the SAT, so.
So some of the logistics is the, the dress code for the tests have been amended, and the boost in the Wi-Fi in the areas where they're doing it has been implemented, they told us that.
Right.
So that when they do the test, they're not having Wi-Fi problems, and the dress code is addressing certain things so that they make sure they get a good testing environment with-
Comfort.
Comfort and minimal distractions or-
Yeah, but that is.
So is that, does this, Dr. Skink, is this suggestion satisfy your request, or you're looking for something different?